Stanley County, February 6th, Board of Education meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. Just like to say this has been a tough week for all of us. We've lost one of our dear students, Ms. Micah Brantley. And I want to give a special thanks and shout out to Mr. Brooks and the staff at East that assisted with the family, and all the community members that pitched in. The funeral yesterday was just amazing, showed community support, and I'm really proud of the whole community for the way they turned out. And I'd like to mention too, the flowers on their diocese here have been furnished by Ms. Glenda Gibson in honor of the Brant family. If she wants to make a comment, please. Okay. With that, I'll call on Mrs. Sherri Vaughn to do our invocation and the pledge tonight.
Help us to not lean solely on our opinions or wants, or give way to the influence or pressures around us. We need godly and earthly wisdom, Lord, to apply in making decisions. Please supply us in knowledge and truth as we battle these last decisions. Father, open our eyes to the barriers and help us walk confidently as we discern the next steps we need to take in moving our system forward. Amen.
Beautiful flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed any further, if there's no objection, we'd like to move Item 15 up to insert it between Item 5 and Item 6. So after a consent agenda, we will go into closed session. Thank you for the invocation, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Harvey, you got some recognitions tonight?
Yes, sir. I'd like to recognize Amanda Melton and Danny Pofflin.
Good evening. Stanley County Schools' early graduates who qualified as Career and Technical Education completers took the ACT National Career Readiness Certification Work Keys Exam November 27th through November 8th. Congratulations are in order for four history-making Stanley County scholars. During the 2017-2018 Early Graduate Administration of the ACT Work Keys College and Career Readiness Assessment, these four students earned the highest possible scores, achieving the platinum level of certification. This is a feat that less than 0.5% of all students engaged in the ACT Work Keys College and Career Readiness Assessment. The platinum level signifies that a recipient has scored at least a Level 6 in each of the three core areas and has the necessary foundational skills for 99% of the jobs in the Work Keys database. In the past four years, we have only had three other students achieve this level, and this year, we had four students achieve the platinum level in the Early Graduate Administration of this test. Please join me in congratulating these four. If you would come forward as I call your name to receive your certificate. Chris Bearden from Stanley Early College. And I'm not sure if our others are with us tonight, but they are Mal Shin from Stanley Robert Bisby from Stanley Early College. And Shane Pappen from North Stanley High School. Congratulations to these four.
Thank you. Next, we have my request addressed the board by Ms. Debbie Bennett of the 218 Community Health Assessment, and she assures me this will be short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to come before you tonight. My name is Debbie Bennett, and I am a public health educator with the Stanley County Health Department. And I've come here tonight to talk about, a very short talk, the 2018 Community Health Assessment. This Community Health Assessment is being coordinated by Stanley County Health Department and the Carolina's Healthcare System Stanley. And what's involved, the one component of it is a survey. And that's since January through February 28th, we're asking people in Stanley County, residents of Stanley County, to complete this survey. And I'm here tonight to encourage you, your audience, and anybody listening or watching this, to complete a survey. All you have to be is 15 years and older. So youth can do it, older people can do it. I went out to the nutrition sites, those folks did it. So it can be done. I did it. So it's relatively easy to do, and it is so important. One, the Health Department develops action plans. We see what the top needs are in this community, and that's where we put the thrust of our resources. Most of our resources go to that area. And the top areas since the 2015 Community Health Assessment, because it's done every three years, substance abuse, heart disease, and suicide. Those were our three areas where we developed action plans. What the areas will be this time, we don't know. We'll ask people to complete a survey, we'll take the survey results, and then we'll see what happens. We also use these to obtain grants, not just the Health Department, community. If you've gone after a grant, they say, "Have you done a community needs assessment?" These needs assessments are time-intensive. They don't have to do all that work. We're happy to let them use the Community Health Assessment that the hospital and the Health Department have done. It saves a lot of time, a lot of energy. And the nice thing is, we can, when you, if you've ever seen this report, it's over 100 pages, and you might be saying, "Oh, please, never. Don't let me see that." It is a fascinating read. It really is. I know you think I'm kidding, but I think it's fascinating. But we can divide it up into zip codes, we can divide it up according to gender, race, how much money you make, marital status. We can divide all it up and give you all kinds of results. It is just awesome. And occasionally, local municipalities will say, "We would like that information pertinent just to our community. Will you do that for us?" And the answer is, you bet we will. We are more than happy to do that. This survey is important because it helps us see what the needs are and helps us get resources to meet those needs. Everybody's voice counts. To complete a survey, you can look at all that and good luck, but I put it there just to amuse myself. Here's what you want to do. Go to the Health Department's website or the hospital's website. If you go to the Health Department's website, we've got a little block there, click on it, takes you right to the survey. It took me six minutes to do the survey, online. It is important, it is very important for this community to participate in this. I encourage you, I encourage the folks here, the folks who are listening to this or watching this, I encourage you to participate, and I thank you for the opportunity to do this tonight. Thank you, and you will get a hard copy of the State of the County Health Report. That's the report we do the years we don't do a Community Health Assessment. It's only 10 pages, but if you like data, the last three pages are, oh my gosh, you will be in heaven. So, thank you so much for your attention. I appreciate it greatly, and remember, please do a survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett, and I take it that you really enjoy your job. Next item is Consent Agenda, and you have before you minutes from January 2nd, regular meeting, January 8th, special call meeting, January 9th, special call meeting, and January 15th, special call meeting. Are there any corrections or additions, deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for Personnel Matters under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A6. Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A1. And Attorney Client Matters under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A3. Okay, motion by Mr. Swerens, second by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries and go to closed session. Stay tuned, folks, we're going to come back, you'll have a superintendent. Shall we open session back to order? Recognize Mr. McIntyre for a motion.
I move that we, the Stanley County Board of Education, enter into contract with Dr. Jeff James to become the superintendent of Stanley County Schools effective March 1st, 2018, through the date of June 30th, 2020, at the annual salary of $130,000.
We have a motion. Does anyone need me to repeat the motion? You're good with the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Dr. James, you want to stand up? And that's your wife, Tammy. Introduce yourself. Thank you, Jeff, for all the years you've put in with the bare office in this county. Appreciate that. Moving into the Committee reports, Instructional Committee, Ms. Glenda Gibson.
The Instructional Committee met on January 30th at 6:00 PM. During the meeting, Ms. Amy Yao from the Butterfly House Children's Advocacy Center presented an overview of a new body safety program for students in first and fifth grades, which was, is titled Stop, Go, Tell. The program integrates perfectly with our guidance and our health curriculums. In your packet is a PowerPoint presentation to look over during the next few weeks. We will bring you more information on this program in the coming months, so there's no action to be taken concerning this program at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Facilities, Mr. McIntyre.
The Facilities Committee met on January 23rd and discussed a land easement agreement with Piedmont Natural Gas. You have that in your packet. It was voted on and sent to the Finance Committee.
Okay, I assume you're ready to do the Finance.
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee had the land easement agreement come to them, and it needs to be approved by the Board.
Okay, the motion now is coming from Committee, does not need a second to approve the easement agreement. Is there any discussion or any questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. You have anything else from you?
There are some things under Other there, under your Finance, and I hate to put Ms. Hatley on the spot, but you had told me something before we went into closed session, and now I'm drawing a blank now.
The Finance Committee had also discussed, bringing to the Board, the decision to cancel the TA hourly increases and the admin supplement increase for this year as initially proposed in the budget. At one of the previous meetings, we had delayed it, and now we're asking to cancel it.
So the motion is from Committee to delay the TA and AP? Cancel.
Cancel the administrative and TA.
Administrative and TA's?
Increases.
Increases, I'm sorry. Okay, let me get that one more time. Recommendation Finance Committee was to cancel TA and administrative increases. Anyone have any discussion or any questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. So that's it for you, Mr. McIntyre? Personnel, Ms. Ricky Watson.
Yes, sir. We met on January the 9th, and our meeting was about new contracts or different contracts for teachers, and I think it's in our policy. It's a new policy, and it's recommended by law. And that's all right, Ms. Calvert. That's all we did, right?
All right, the Policy Committee met on January the 23rd, 5:30, and you will see in your packets, Board members, that the Committee did approve the following, and we need your review. Over the next 30 days, they'll be tabled. So anybody that's sitting here, anybody in the public, any of us, if you want to review them, you can go onto the Stanley County Schools website, look under the About Stanley County Schools tab, and then you will see Policies Under Consideration. They'll sit there for 30 days. So if you're curious and you want to read through all of that, I'll just highlight those four that we're going to be looking at, or three. Policy 4025 is about student transfers. Policy 4190 is about fundraising procedures. Policy 5310 is contracts for teachers. We did discuss a new policy. Ms. Georgia Harvey discussed this. It's a Business Advisory Council, and this is mandated by, it's directed by legislation that's directing LEAs to have Business Advisory Council formed to work for CTE. This is great. This is where we're going to be able to form an advisory council with the surrounding business leaders in the county, and this is something that is mandated by the state. So we discussed that. Ms. Harvey will be sending an email and a PowerPoint presentation to everyone here so you can see more about that. There are also a list of policies, the next group that you have there that we do need to vote on tonight. They have been tabled for 30 days. Okay, Policy Code 3196, School Health Education. You can see there are just some minor changes to the wording there that's highlighted. So we need a, do you review a motion to?
Go ahead and do these, as you do each one. Okay, Policy Code 3196, School Health Education. That's coming from Committee, it's a recommendation for the changes highlighted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Policy stands approved.
That's just Policy Code 6010, Free and Reduced Price Meal Services. Just this is the school system will provide free meals and reduced price meals to eligible students in the schools, and it lists, you know, all that is involved with that.
This is Policy 6010, Free and Reduced Price Meal Services. So basically, all that lined out is being replaced by the yellow, if I'm understanding this correctly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion by anyone? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Correction, opposed, no. Motion carries.
The next policy code is 6015. Title is Operation of Child Nutrition Services Program. Just give a summary. All schools will participate in federal, national child nutrition programs and will receive commodities donated by the United States Department of Agriculture. All federal and state revenues will be accepted and applied to maximize the use of such funds for the purposes of providing nutritional meals to students at the lowest possible price. And it lists the operational standards and the meal charges.
Okay, Policy 6015, Operation of Child Nutrition Services, Crump. From Committee, doesn't need a second, any discussion or any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
All right, next policy, 6015, Competitive Food Sales. And this lays out that schools may not sell food, snacks, or beverages to students in areas accessible to them on the school campus during the extended school day. And that extended school day is defined as the time from 12:01 a.m. through 30 minutes after the school dismissal bell rings.
Policy 6015, A, Competitive Food Sales. No second needed, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Ms. Crump, one more, I think.
Yes, last one. Policy Code 6020, Child Nutrition Services Procurement. And you can see there's just one line there that needs to be amended.
Okay, Policy 6020, Child Nutrition Services Procurement, doesn't need a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just add that we are going to be meeting, if I can find my notes here, we're going to be meeting February the 20th, I believe. Is that right, Ms. Harvey? Yes, February 20th at 5:00 p.m.
Meeting.
Yes, the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Crump. Ms. Harvey, do you have anything? Okay, the good old calendar, it's back again. Ms. Calvert.
I have three calendars I'm sharing with you this evening. Before I share those, just a little background on the calendar. The State Department gives us guidelines that we have to follow. The calendar for our staff has to include 215 days. The first calendar I'm sharing with you is the Stanley Early College Calendar for this current school year. We needed to add two additional professional days at the end of the year, which would have been, is May 24th and the 25th. That would make 215 days, as well as, because we need them to work up until the holidays so they can get that paid holiday. So those will not be sheltered days, and the staff could take off if they wanted to take off those days. But then this way, they get the paid holiday. And then the next two calendars are the Traditional Calendar and the Early College Calendar for next year. I will tell you, our goal was to go two years out, and our meetings got delayed because of this bad weather, and so we've agreed to come back together later, but we wanted to go ahead and get next year's calendar to you so families can make plans. In this calendar, the Traditional Calendar, by law, we can start no earlier than Monday, closest to August 26th, and we have to be finished no later than the Friday, closest to June 11th. Law also states our students have to have 185 instructional days or 1,025 hours. For the past few years, we've used the hours of instruction. So in this calendar, you have 176 instructional days, which gives us 1,038 instructional hours. You'll notice there are six early release dates. Four of those are ones we traditionally come, Mr. Pofflin comes to you and asks for two early release days because of exam schedules, at the end of the first semester and at the second semester. So we just included those in the calendar. And then the staff really wanted early release date before Christmas and also before, the last day of school, excuse me. And then the Early College Calendar, they do start earlier, but they have to follow the college's calendar.
We need to vote on three separate ones?
Yes, sir.
All right. First one up, Stanley County Schools, 2017-2018, SEC HS Calendar. That's approved already, right? I'm sorry. We just got two to vote on here.
We just have to add the two days at the end, two professional days.
All right, your initial calendar. Any questions on it? Move to approve, Ms. Gibson, do we have a second? Second one, Ms. McIntyre. Any questions further? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries, Calendar's approved, and the SEC HS, we do vote on. All right, do we have a motion? Move to approve, Ms. McIntyre. Second one, Ms. Gibson, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, and the Calendar's approved.
Thank you.
And we're going to take a five-minute recess. We've been at it for a good while, and I'm over to you for a break for some people here, so, apologize. But we'll take a five-minute recess. Open session back to order. Mr. Danny Pofflin, Curriculum and Instruction.
If you will, I have placed a spreadsheet on your, or Ms. Hope Miller placed a spreadsheet on your desk. Mr. Tim Hatley put this together, of course, and thanks to him. If you will look at this, the reason that we didn't get on the agenda, we don't have basically put on PowerPoint, we didn't get the scores for English 2, Math 2 and 3 too late semester. Hatley put this together. If you will, I'm just going to briefly go over this and try to answer any questions, especially since I have Mr. Hatley here to turn around and ask. If you look at the first column, or first on the left side, it's Math, English 2, Biology. Of course, these are the three indicator courses that come up with the school performance grade, three of the seven indicators in high schools. If you look at the next column, so to speak, the large column, fall, what you have listed is 16, 17, Math 1, for example, and then below it, you have Math 1 for this year, 17 and 18. What Mr. Hatley did, of course, is he actually put the difference of those two. So what we're comparing is the first semester test scores of this year versus the test scores first semester from last year. And if you can look down through there, we see that Math 1 went up 5.61 points this semester compared to exactly a year ago, the first semester of last year. English 2 went up 7.6 points, and extremely proud to say that the Biology scores went up 12.68 points from a year ago. Now, if you go towards to the next large column, it's spring, of course, we're not there yet, but if you look, that will give you the percent GLP, and that's grade level proficient. That's what determines for us, basically, when we look at the school report card, if a student is proficient. We go over to the year total, and what this does, this compares where we were at first semester to the end of everyone testing from last year. And if you look at that, you can see that our Math 1 from last year, if we take the entire year last year compared to what we did the first semester, is up 2.6 percentage points. Our blip, as we say, would be with English 2, we're actually down negative 1.9, you know, based on last year's scores of this semester. But our Biology, if we compare it, and again, all of last year to first semester, this year, we're up 14.4 percentage points. And we did want to make the Board aware. And we did wanna make the board aware, of course, to me, that's like the greatest news in the world, and we're very proud of our folks, and we've really tried to work on our high school scores as we're moving forward. And, of course, our big push is to finish up the second semester stronger than our first semester. So just wanted to have that. If there's any questions, again, I will try to answer them the best that I can, I just want you to make aware. I have one other item that requires no action from the board, it's just really FYI of events. Basically, let you know what's coming up with middle school and elementary school. Just let you know that the Stanley County School Science Fair finished up in January. Our winners will go and compete at U N C C very soon. We completed the Stanley County School Spelling Bee today, and we're proud to announce that Stella Griffin, eighth grade student at West Stanley Middle School, won our spelling bee, and we have to thank Mr. Leon, he came and is always does a good job as moderator for that. And we'd like to thank all the participants from each of the elementary and middle schools that came and competed today. It was impressive, and I would not want to be up there spelling against them. They did a wonderful job. Also coming up, we have Kids Speak Out, it's like a pre-oraltorical contest on March sixteenth for elementary, middle. We have Robotics Stanley, that I know I saw some of you at last year out at Locust, coming up on March twenty-fourth. Battle of the Books, April twenty-sixth, and we have Math twenty-four competition on March twenty-first. And, of course, we'll relay all this to you through the newsletters and let you keep up to date. High school, we're just as busy, we have Quiz Bowl on March seventeenth, on that same day. We have C T E competition and regional skills in Rowan County on that same day, and we have our Electronics Blast, April thirteenth, at Stanley Community College as well. And all these are wonderful events to go see what they do. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poplin. Ms. Calvert.
Personnel agenda is in your pocket. Section one requires no action, but section two does require action.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve section two, do we have a second? Second one, Ms. Gibson, any questions, discussion? Here in none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Ms. Hatley, Resilience Services.
Yes, first I'd like to recognize Stephanie Alman, our Nutrition Director, she will be presenting the procurement plan for Child Nutrition Services.
Good evening. DPI requires districts to follow a board-approved procurement plan that would contain all of the federal and state regulations surrounding purchasing of goods and services for the child nutrition program. And every few years, we have to update the policy, excuse me, the plan, in order to incorporate new regulations and how we handle our specific processes. Now, please note that this is separate from the procurement policy which you approved tonight. That just references this plan. This plan is the nuts and bolts of how we do things, and I believe all of you have a copy, and it just spells out very, very specifically how we purchase and our basic, not only the regulations, but our local practices. So the policy states that we will prepare, maintain, and follow a plan in our purchasing of goods and services for the child nutrition program and things purchased with held nutrition funds, and so that does require the board review and approval for us to follow. Any questions?
Ms. Alman, was there anything really different, like, from, like, last year or years?
Not a whole lot. There's a little bit, you know, we had that Iran divestment act, and then it kinda backed off a little bit from that, and so most of it was really the language as far as from the federal regulations. Twenty-eleven was the last time we did one, and so there was just a handful of things. And then there were some district-specific things, how we've been purchasing certain lots of goods, whatever's working best for our purposes. So it was really just some updating, there was no major.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve, Ms. Gibson, Stanley Organizational Case Procurement Plan, Child Nutrition Services, do we have a second? Second one, Mr. McIntyre, any discussion, any questions? Here in none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I have a couple of items in your packets tonight, the first one being surplus vehicles. Well, actually, we're asking for you to designate them as surplus vehicles so that we can list them on Gov. Deals for Sale. We have other items that we list on Gov. Deals for Sale, but if we expect that these might sell for five hundred dollars or more, we have to have board approval to designate them as surplus before we can post them. And you have those listed here, you have their, the make, model, the year, and the odometer readings.
These all have been replaced.
Yes, these are not in service, none of these vehicles in service, they've been out of service anywhere from three years to three months. And replacement vehicles have been purchased.
You just need a motion to declare these surplus.
Yes, sir.
A move that we declare these vehicles surplus.
Motion by Ms. Crump to declare vehicles surplus, do we have a second? Mr. McIntyre, all in favor, any discussion, any questions? Here in none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no.
Thank you.
That's real deal, Chair, get it on.
Yes, sir. The next item in your packet, there are several budget amendments. I'll start with the first one, Budget Amendment Number Seven. This is for the State Public School Fund. You can see the increases that we have and the decreased amounts. The amount of the increase is five hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
Need a motion for Budget Amendment Seven. Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve this Budget Amendment Number Seven, do we have a second? Second, Ms. Crump, any further discussion or any questions? Here in none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Number eight.
Yes, sir, number eight is for the Capital Outlay Fund. This, these are adjustments made for installment payments for school bus replacement. You'll see the increased amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred ten dollars. DPI purchases, the school buses, they're on a four-year installment plan, they allot the money to make the payment, and we show the payment on our books.
So we're just a pass-through on that?
We're just a pass-through, yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve number eight, Budget Amendment Eight, do we have a second? Second, Ms. Gibson, any further discussion? Here in none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Number nine.
Number nine is for the Local Special Expense Fund. These are adjustments made for actual revenues and expenditures. There is no increase or decrease here. There were some, there was a P R C budgeted with no offsetting revenue code that was done in error, so we are moving that budget to the appropriate P R C codes listed here.
Mr. McIntyre, motion to approve, number nine. Second, Ms. Gibson, any questions, further discussion? Here in none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Number ten is for the Capital Outlay Fund. These were adjustments made for actual revenues and expenditures, and the amount of the increase is two hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre, Budget Number Ten, do we have a second? Second, any discussion? Here in none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
All right, the final one, Budget Amendment Number Eleven is also for the Local Special Expense Fund. These were adjustments made for real tools for schools' grant revenues and expenditures. The amount of the increase is ten thousand dollars.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve Budget Amendment Number Eleven, do we have a second? Any questions? Here in none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. I just wanna say, I think I've been through some whole years before, we hadn't done that many budget amendments in a whole year.
Well, get used to it, we are gonna make sure we stay on top of our budget amendments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have a statement to make regarding the recent comments concerning Medicaid fee-for-service revenues, if you would entertain that for a moment?
On the floor.
Regarding the recent comments surrounding Medicaid fee-for-service revenues, I have several points to make. First, the issue concerning, the issue is concerning past school years and past administration. We cannot change the past. Second, our E C programs and services were not slighted by the allocation error that occurred in previous school years. And third, the current administration is handling the requirements for these funds correctly this school year. The issue in itself is a technical paperwork issue. In the past, the district was spending money the way it should be used for E C programs and services. However, when recording expenditures, the monies were not allocated properly. To rectify the allocation error, expenditures coded to local operating funds could have been moved to the Medicaid fee-for-service account codes and a budget amendment made and approved by the board. Here's an analogy that may help those in the public. A married couple has separate checking accounts to which their paychecks are deposited. Certain bills are paid from the wife's checking account and other bills from the husband's checking account. They know how much pay is being deposited into those checking accounts, how much the monthly bills are, and what the balance should be after paying those bills. They are budgeting and accounting for the expenditures. One month, they pay a bill from the wife's checking account that normally comes out of the husband's account. The bill was paid, but from the wrong account. To correct that, so the amount of money expected to be in each account is there, they would write a check from the husband's account and deposit it back into the wife's checking account, so funds are back to normal in both checking accounts. That is similar to the kind of transfer that needed to be made for the Medicaid fee-for-service funds in the past years. That wasn't done, but we still spent money needed on E C. There was no tangible loss for E C programs and services. The district spent more local funds on E C programs and services than the monies received from Medicaid fee-for-service reimbursements. Over the last four school years, the district received Medicaid fee-for-service revenues totaling one million, two hundred forty-three thousand, fifty-nine dollars. The district spent one million, nine hundred twelve thousand, two hundred eighteen of local funds on E C expenditures. Therefore, the district spent a hundred and fifty-four percent of local funds compared to fee-for-service reimbursement funds received. Another way of saying this is that we spent one and a half times as much in local dollars as we received in Medicaid fee-for-service funds. Again, the issue is with past school fiscal years and past administration, no longer employed with Stanley County Schools. No E C programs or services were affected by the allocation error. As soon as I was made aware of the issue, I immediately reported it to the superintendent. I'm doing due diligence to make sure the funds are spent appropriately and allocations are handled correctly this fiscal year. Thank you.
It sounds like my wife, by the way, we do bill, shift the money back. And I agree wholeheartedly that finger-pointing doesn't get us the problem solved, so we're just buckle out and work at it. Thank you. Public comments, we have some. Melissa Elk. You've been here enough, you know the routine, right?
Yes, sir. Melissa Elk, I'm just Stanley County Schools teacher, I just come as a teacher today. I come to a teacher, as a teacher, with many voices, and thank you, Ms. Hatley, for clearing that up, and I hope that the public uses that analogy, 'cause that was a very good one. But given the recent financial, as we would say, issues that have, that have surrounded Stanley County Schools, it has many of the teachers murmuring and asking questions about their supplement. And so I come just as many voices going, you go ask the question, because they know that I will. Could you reassure the teachers that they will get their supplement? Or if there is a chance that they are not, can you still let the teachers know that they will have to make other budgeting changes for the end of the school year? I know that the supplement always seems to be kind of a tight spot for teachers, and so I haven't heard anything other than concerns. And it's a big enough concern, and it causes, it is causing enough unrest in many of the teachers that I think that it just needs to be, to be settled, you know, to get that fear out and get the information out to the employees. All right? That's all I got. Thank you.
Melanie Honeycutt. Mr. Tasker, James Tasker, Lemon Tasker. And I, I wanna personally apologize to you, 'cause I sent you an email, and I've had so many irons in the fire, I don't know which one I'm pulling out, and I should've gotten back to you, but go ahead, you got the floor.
Well, I'm coming as a parent. I worked in Stanley County, retired in twenty fifteen, and I teach in Pageland, thirty-three years in the classroom, math teacher. My wife works at West Stanley High School. In September, our son had an issue with one particular teacher. I brought it to the attention of the principal, and we met two weeks later, first week of October. In December, the behavior, the conflict in the room had continued, I met with the principal and assistant principal with my wife, and I asked a question, have either of you talked with my son since September? The answer was no from both, and I asked if they had spoken with any other students in the classroom since September, and the answer was no. We filed a grievance, but we were told that the grievance was beyond a thirty-day window to be heard because my complaint was in September, and, you know, I missed the deadline. So I shared that information with the board, and I'm coming tonight because my son transferred before that second meeting to Albemarle Middle School. It's difficult to transfer in the middle of a year, but it was best for our situation and for his situation. I requested a schedule change, it was ignored. I heard nothing from the school administration until, you know, the incidents continued. Pity things like not returning a progress report on the form that was provided means you have silent lunch. My son has, got his report card today from Albemarle Middle School, his low grades of ninety-four, he had three ninety-eights and two hundreds. We are chasing students to charter schools and to private options homeschooling because we don't communicate. My request to the board is that at some point, someone step up and be an advocate for the kids that are left in that classroom. I heard yesterday from a parent who's scared to come to the board, 'cause she's a school employee, but her daughter's in the same situation. There have been eight different people tell me, same thing happened with my child. I'm here today just to tell you, we need oversight. My concern is over my child. But in November of last year, I had heart surgery, and when the doctor said, I do this all the time, that sounded great, but when it's your heart, it matters. Now, I'm not here today for my child. My child's at Albemarle- My child's at Albemarle Middle, nothing but applause and tip of the hat. Albemarle Middle has been a good fit to finish out this school year. But I would request respectfully that my emails, my phone calls, et cetera, on behalf of the students that are left in that classroom, at least be looked into because no student should ever be told, "You can't ask a question." Before school, after school, during class, any other time. I taught 33 years and I'll leave it with this, I learned this from a good administrator. Kids don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. That's how I teach. But anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I think I'm getting this right. Aquarius Dockery. Chris Lambert. Al Andrew. Okay. Superintendent's comments, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you. I've got a few. I'd like to remind everyone that kindergarten registration nights begin this month. You can find information on that at your elementary school websites and the Stanley County School website, as well as Stanley Early College and Upward Choice STEM School applications for enrollment for next year. That begins this month. This week, February 5th through the 9th, is National School Counseling Week. I would like to recognize the contributions of our school counselors in our schools and the positive impact that they do, that they have in helping students. February is also Career and Technical Education Month. Career and Technical Education prepares students for careers and further educational opportunities. Stanley County Schools offers many CTE programs in our middle and high schools in preparing our students to be career and college-ready. I encourage you to check our Stanley County Schools Facebook daily this month for updates of CTE in our schools and information on CTE. I would like to say that in the 1617 year, last year, our CTE programs provided Stanley County students with 1,076 workplace credentials. These credentialed students can take into the workforce and gives them an opportunity to enter the workforce re, more ready than those that have not got credentials, of course. Some of those credentials includes Microsoft, OSHA, SafeServe, NCCER, ETA, National Career Readiness, and then Agriculture Assurance-type certifications. I'd also like to say thank you to our Student Services Teams, Mr. Jonathan Brooks and his staff at East, and our Stanley County School staff for their support and prayers during this week. I'd like to thank Stanley County School staff and the Board of Education for their confidence and support during the interim leadership period I've had. And I look forward to your leadership, Dr. James. Welcome to Stanley County Schools.
I would just like to say, please remember the Hamilton and the Bryant family. She was a precious child, very, very precious. Thank you.
I would just like to thank Ms. Harvey for her leadership during the transition period that we've been going through and, and I trust her continued leadership during the transition to Dr. James. Dr. James, I welcome you. We look forward to your, your leadership, your foresight. I trust you have good judgment, even though tonight you've got Jeff Branch beside you, so I question your judgment. But we're, we're excited to have you on board and look forward to where you're going to take us.
For the students that were recognized with the platinum level, highest achieving, congratulations to them and to those of you that work with them closely. Ms. Debbie Bennett, who presented the health assessment, she was a lot of fun. I think she's excited me about maybe doing this survey. Especially since she talked about how it was used to obtain grants. Melissa Belk, as always, thank you for sharing teacher concerns and bringing that to our attention. Mr. Fleming, thank you for bringing before the board your concerns as well. To Ms. Harvey, thank you for your leadership. I appreciate everything that you've done and welcome, Dr. James. I look so forward to you being here. Thank you.
Just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and also just ask everyone to continue to remember the family of Mike O'Brien and your prayers. And to take a minute to thank Ms. Harvey, wasn't necessarily a, an easy or glamorous situation to step into at the time, but you've done a wonderful job and we thank you for all that you've done for us. And not only you, but also Ms. Hatley, from being the finance chair, I know these past few weeks, if, you never married, hear Ms. Hatley say a whole lot, but she's had a whole lot to say over the past couple of weeks. But thank you so much for your hard work. You've, you've put in a lot of hours and we are very appreciative of all you're doing. And also, would like to welcome Dr. James to Stanley County Schools. We look forward to working with you.
I just want to start by saying, Ms. Belk, thank you for being so consistent in coming and talking with us about the concerns of the employees of Stanley County Schools. I'll make sure, I'm sure many or all of us will make sure that we address your concerns and get some information to you very quickly. Ms. Hatley, echo what Ryan has just said. Thank you very, very much. I really enjoyed listening to your explanation. I thought it was very simple and easy to understand and I think it diffuses a lot of the situation and answers a lot of the questions that we naturally have in the community. It's been very contested over the last couple of weeks. I would love to see that printed. Mr. Starnes, it would be great if that was printed in the paper. I'd love to hear it on the radio. So, that's, that's fantastic. Ms. Harvey, I can't thank you enough for riding this ship and helping us to stay transparent and being such a good, solid leader. You've been steady and stable. So, thank you and I look forward to continuing to work with you as you lead in the central office. And I just want to shout out over here Danny Poplin because you've been working two jobs for the last couple of months. And thank you for helping keep the ship sailing over at Albemarle High School while you did your central office job as well. Hats off to you. Dr. James, I'm so excited that you're joining us and you're going to be leading our schools.
Ms. Belk, appreciate you coming tonight and bringing those concerns of your fellow teachers, valid concerns, and I hope there's a lot of follow-up on that for you. Also, congratulations to Emily Shaw, new principal at Albemarle High School. Emily's a tough lady with a big heart. I think she'll do well there. Ms. Hatley, thank you for your explanation tonight. I very much appreciate it. I think it's, you know, like Mrs. Crump said, it's very relatable. I think anyone can understand. I just wish it came sooner. I think we could put a lot of things to rest a lot earlier.
Also, Ms. Harvey, thank you for stepping in and looking after things for us for the last few months. Though it's not been an easy job, we appreciate it.
Dr. James, welcome. Glad to have you. Get ready.
Thank you. I wanted to say that I've, I think I've worked with three or four interim superintendents over the years. And Ms. Harvey, I can say without a doubt, I've never seen one step into so many hot issues so quickly as you had to deal with, starting off with the weather, making calls on the weather. And that's always, you, you get crucified whether you do, whether you don't on that. And you had to deal with some other tough issues. And beyond that, I appreciate you very deeply, your professionalism, willing to do this and step back and still be a good member of the team. That speaks volumes to your, your professionalism. And I thank you very much for your, and your, and your willingness to do that. I think you knew when you stepped into the saddle, it was going to be a tough ride, but you, you, well, and I think you've sort of been riding two jobs long, Mr. Poplin, so you two probably need a day or two off to get your batteries charged back. But thank you so much. And Dr. James and your wife Tammy, I've been with him, with him tonight. We welcome you to Stanley County and look forward to working with you. I've got some people up here that tolerate me in this job. I'm pretty much of a bruiser and a hard charger sometimes and I guess, being an old armor officer, I'm used to running over things and sometimes I got to ratchet back a little bit. I'm not in that world anymore and it's tough sometimes. But you've got some people up here that care about Stanley County Schools. We have different views on some things, but I, I can vouch that all of them do care about Stanley County Schools, whether they agree with me or not, things that they do care about Stanley County Schools. So, I think you'll find a good group of people to work with here and we look forward to working with you and getting some things taken care of. And I also like to thank, again, Ms. Glenda for bringing the flowers tonight and I think she said she's going to get those to the family. Do keep that family in your prayers. That was Ms. Watson, I had the opportunity to go and I think Ms. Harvey and Ms. Cowick were at that funeral the other day and that's seeing that port in that community was just, was just something art rending. But go ahead.
This past week, I was able to, and I know several, I believe, were able to go read. I know a lot of you, I saw your faces out there too, reading at either East Albemarle or Ridgefield. And that was a real joy, a real, a real experience, an eye-opener for me when I'm used to eighth graders and I'm reading to kindergarteners. So, anyway, that, that was a lot of fun. Thank you.
And one last thing, Dr. James, you've, you've got a lot of your staff sitting behind you tonight and I think you've got a good, good team of hard workers right there that are willing to put their shoulder to the rhinestone, so to speak. So, I know you will have high expectations, no doubt in my mind. With that being said, um... Our next, I'm fighting to see a paperwork up here tonight. The next board meeting will be Tuesday, March the 6th, and Dr. James, that will be your debut with us. And it will be here in the comments room at 7:00 in the evening on March 6th. Closed session's been taken care of, so we were entertaining a motion to adjourn. Oh, Mr. McIntyre, do we have a second? Second, all those in favor saying five, saying aye. Those no. Meeting stands adjourned.